Call this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting in order, Monday, September 16th. Zero eight thirty, it's eight thirty-one. I welcome each and every one of you. I can remind you, if you have phones or electronic devices, you can put on vibrate or shut them down, greatly appreciate it. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Lyne.
Here.
If we please stand for the pledge or remain standing with prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious God, you are light and wherever you shine, you cast out the darkness. We have become so very aware of the darkness which invades this world and causes distrust and discord. Come now into this place and into our hearts, dispel the darkness and bring on your kingdom of light. Let peace reign in this place today and always. We make this prayer in the power of your spirit and your holy name. Amen.
Okay, again, welcome. Receive a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Cast in agenda, minutes of September 3rd, 2019, regular session, tax releases and refunds.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Lyne.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, airport matters. Andrew Shorter, Airport Director, semi-annual update and an FAA grant supplement request for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, good morning. Appreciate you having me back, although I guess I put myself on the agenda, so as long as no one said no, I was gonna come back. There's a temporal aspect to me being here again so quickly. I apologize for the authority chairman, he's out in Okeecroak, he has some property he has to take care of, so I'm here alone and unafraid, but he sends his regards and respects. Coastal Carolina Airport, we'll talk about the update to that, something that we missed two weeks ago, and then we're gonna talk about another grant opportunity that we have. So real quick on this slide, the friendly airport for residents of Eastern, residents and visitors of Eastern North Carolina, that's our vision statement, and that's something we wake up every morning doing, thinking about being the friendly airport. Unfortunately, airports, we get thrown under the bus with airlines a lot of times, but we do get a lot of positive feedback on being a friendly facility, so we take that in heart, and a lot of things I'll talk about are in regard to being a facility for people in the community and people visiting the community, makes it easy for them. Okay, so quickly, again, thank you for your time, I'm gonna talk through these things, introduction and overview, annual statistics, I won't crush anybody with a lot of numbers, but I just want you to have a feel for what we do on an annual basis. Then we go into priority projects, most of what I've talked about up here before has been project related, but I did wanna open the aperture to some of these other things. The master plan wrap-up, where we are in that, again, that's our 20-year plan moving forward, and then finally, that FAA supplemental grant, which is this opportunity that I've mentioned. So just as a reminder, we have eight authority members that, of course, you select, and then we also have four additional members that are selected by our adjacent counties, and then that's in by state statute, including the base at Cherry Point, which the Rhonda Murray is, most of you know, is the CEO's representative there. Our mission kinda dovetails in with our vision, and the key words there are the safe, secure, efficient and user-friendly piece of it, and those kinda cut across all levels of what we're doing, whether it's daily or strategically, so we take those to heart as well. All right, so first of all, let's start with the picture of the airport, this is a great picture of the airport, shows our relative proximity to the town of New Bern, which is a great thing, any of you that have ever been to OAJ, it's kinda out there, and in a lot of cases, airports, especially commercial service airports, are not closely associated with the largest town or city that they may be associated with. So, but what comes with that is some constraints, and you'll notice on here, of course, we have Highway 70, Williams Road on this end of the runway, and down at this other end, Bryces Creek, and one of our projects will talk about how that constraint comes into effect. But the footstomper's on this one, again, talking about the economic impact, $363 million a year economic impact, that's direct, indirect and induced. That's a huge asset for the community, so even if you're not using the airport, and the good thing about the airport, most of the costs associated with the airport are from user fees. If you're a commercial passenger, somewhere in your ticket, you're paying for the use of the airport, and then if you're using the airport as a pilot, whether it be a fuel flowage fee or some other things, there's a way that you help pay for the airport to be there. So 363 million, and then, of course, the 12 million state and local taxes that's collected from the use of the airport. Okay, so I put this back up here to remind everybody, there's 72 public airports in the state, 100 counties, 72 airports, and then only 10 of those are commercial service airports. So once again, Craven County has the benefit of having one of those 10 commercial service airports out of the 100 counties. If you look out to the east, you see the population density, of course, is not quite as much out here as it is in the middle of the state, but, you know, we sit on an island a little bit, as far as, again, our neighboring counties Pamlico and Jones County not having airports, and Carterack County only having a general aviation airport. You'll see out, obviously, out in the mountain area, you can't put an airport in all the mountainous regions, you know, we could practically put an airport every square mile out this way. So again, we're very fortunate to have the lay-down that we have and have this airport here so convenient for the residents of Craven County in particular. I put up here the North Carolina Airports Association, because all these 72 airports belong and work really together as a business enterprise in the state, providing those roll-up economic impact numbers to be 52 billion a year within the state. We work very closely with the association, to wit, I was elected president of that association this year, so, you know, that's a great honor for the airport that we can contribute in that way. Okay, so here are the statistics, I put up 2018 calendar year statistics, that is how the FAA kinda grades everything on the calendar year, and then that's why you'll see I talk about our FY '19 budget, that, of course, straddles that. So airline passengers, 111,000 employments. Employments are people getting on commercial airplanes, so that's how we're graded by the FAA. Hopefully, and generally, as many people get off of an airplane as get on it, otherwise it wouldn't be a very good business model for the airport, but 111,000 is our scorecard, so to speak, and that's what our entitlement grants come from, those numbers. So that's pretty good, that's not our high watermark, our high watermark was 125,000 in 2012. Since then, I think most of you've heard me talk about the pilot shortage, we're down on flights and seats from 2012. Some of that was due to the root rationalization that the airlines did, i.e. a little bit better business practices, because while our total employments have gone down because of the total number of seats available to us have gone down, our load factors have gone up by about 15, close to 20 percent. So you could say, as a businessperson, the airlines have done what they needed to do. But of course, there is a market dynamic, supply, demand, with the number of seats and the number of people flying. Those last few seats on any of those airplanes get to be fairly pricey, and even though our prices are a little bit about, on a one-way ticket, about $12 lower than OAJ and only about $45 lower than Raleigh, those last few seats, again, market principles working there, as the supply goes down, those seats come up. So I'm continually discussing, discussing and negotiating with the airlines to get the right mix here of not only frequencies, but the numbers of seats. 75/25 that I put up there is kinda the percentage, American versus Delta in the number of seats that we have. The number of flights is really 70/30-ish, but the number of seats, because American generally has a little bit bigger planes these days, we have 75 percent of the seats on American. I like to tell people, again, that employments or people get on, but that adds up, obviously, people getting off, about 220 or so thousand, so I like to say we handle about a quarter million passengers a year. Operations, 36,000, just a little over, that's individual aircraft operations, that's a landing or takeoff, and the important piece about that, what I wanna mention here, so we see controlled by federal contract tower. Our tower here at New Bern is not manned by FAA employees, it's manned by employees contracted by the FAA that work under FAA standards, but really, when you do the business cost analysis of it, throughout the country, contract tower employees do 40 percent of the controlling on about 20 percent of the budget, so it's one of those good news, private partners, you know, government-private synergies that work well. There are six federal contract towers within the state of North Carolina, and we are one of those. Okay, financials, budget, $3.1 million. Our operating budget is about $2.5 million a year, so the non-operating piece of that, how we shoehorn it into the budget, is our, in the case of last year, was our half-million-dollar bogey to pay for our local share of our federal grant that we got last year, which was a $5 million grant. So, that's rolled up in there, but again, operating year to year is about $2.5 million what it costs us. So the revenue centers, these are the big three that we track, parking lot, rental car, so we get a gross or a net of the gross receipts from the rental cars, and then the airlines, they pay rent for the space that they lease within the terminal, they pay landing fees, and then PFC is a passenger facility charge, and that's something that the FAA allows us to charge if we have qualified projects. So over this time, all these projects that we're doing, if they're qualified to get federal grant money, we can usually apply to get PFC rates, and that's $4.39 for each employment, once again, that's what we count, people getting on. So, as you can see with 111,000, that's about $440,000 a year for qualified projects. Expenses, the two big buckets that we put it into is airside and landside, kinda makes sense, airside, we consider it generally inside the fence type of things, taking care of the airport to maintain the public nature of an airport, and then landside, the easy example there would be the parking lot, that's something that we do to help, actually, in our case, our size of airport, supplement that airside. The big thing about the expenses on the airside, that's mostly cost recovery, so the rates that we charge the airline, the FAA likes us to just be recovering costs, they don't like us to gouge the airline, so to speak, or they want us to operate, the FAA, when we take these grants, we sign up, and two of the grant assurances, one is on how we spend our money, and the other one is about how we make our money, so they have, you know, their hand on our shoulder, helping us make sure that it's fair and we're not overcharging for our facilities, because it is a public use facility. And then on the landside, that's fair market value, again, the FAA, anything that's not considered airside, they want us charging fair market value for that, because they do want us to be self-sufficient, that's the other side of it. So there is a profit motive of what we do. Okay, so under the projects, this should be near and dear to everyone's heart, we've talked about this one before, you've had a resolution supporting this, just a quick update on it, this is the traffic circle that we're gonna put in next to the terminal to allow two-way traffic on this side of Airline Drive, hopefully to relieve some congestion in James City. They've done all the survey work, you can see these are resultant of the engineer's work. I'm told that the Board of Transportation has approved the funding for this, you know, there was some question, NC DOT funding was a little bit up in the air because of some of the things going on at that level, but we're told that this is gonna continue to press forward sometime, construction between, you know, fall and spring of this year. Okay, so this is the other footstomper, this is what I talked about, the constraints of where the airport is and where the runway is. This is the end of the runway, obviously, this is 70 right here, and this is Williams Road, apologize for you back there, but if you turn around, you can see where I'm pointing. So our, what we've decided to work with the NC DOT on is realigning Williams Road. The critical piece is right here where my pointer is, that's an ILS antenna, there's less than 1,000 feet from the end of the runway to that, so we have to mathematically shorten our runway. Even though we have 6,453 feet of pavement, the pilots operating high-performance aircraft cannot consider that entire length. So if they're going the 04 direction northeast, the runway to them is only 6,053 feet long. If they're going the southwest direction, it's only 6,153 feet long. So if we realign this road, we move this antenna over here, without putting one ounce or one inch of asphalt down, we get a longer runway. So that's kinda phase one of this project. And you can see the NPO, I put the cover letter up there, they've signed out a letter recently in support of a runway extension at New Bern, so it's playing both in the STI process, but they've also sent this letter to several key legislators looking for help on this project. So this is what the resultant would look like, we would have to mitigate wetlands in here where the road is currently, we would realign the road, and then once that's done and we move this antenna, then we can extend the runway 347 feet, gets us to a 6,800-foot runway, which through this 20-year plan, that is our, meets the need for our critical design aircraft on a hot summer day. So, and literally, you can see, that's all we can get out of this. To do anything else, you'd be filling in Bryces Creek, or you'd be really on this end, you can't do anything unless you're, you know, 70, future Interstate 42 goes somewhere else. But the good news is, 6,800 feet really does establish the need for our requirement for those aircraft, and you could probably project beyond 20 years from now, you know, who knows what the performance of airplanes are gonna be, the flying cars that we've been talking about for 60 years may be here by then, and you don't need 6,800 feet. So we're comfortable with 6,800 feet being the target for this runway, to keep this airport where it is, that great location, and provide the services that the airlines need to get in and out of here. Okay, master plan update, this was a little bit, it was in the last brief that I gave you, it didn't really fit in there, but this is where it fits in. So the airport master plan, like I said, a 20-year update to it, we're in our final steps of finalizing it, we've done all the study, we've done all the work. The next thing that we're doing that I mentioned last time, we're gonna hold a public open house, either at the Cornerstone Church, which the DOT uses a lot in the James City area, or potentially, if the convention center is available by then, there, so we're about to do that. After that, we take our comments, address any comments that we have, then we finally put pen to paper, put it on a large plan that goes to the FAA for them to approve and sign off on, and then that's what really gives us the ability to get grants in the future. Any of these grants that we're talking about when I come up here annually is because we have that on our planning document. The FAA is very reluctant to hip-shoot things that you, the good ideas that you may come up with to need money for, so they want it on the plan. Quickly on this plan, you can see the terminal, the light green, you can just make out here as the terminal as it stands, anything in dark green would be additions, anything in yellow down here versus the orange. So phase one would be the firefighting building, move it over here so we can move a couple of the services that we have in the terminal to that building, then that opens up area to expand the, it's a pre-9/11 design, so it expands the area that TSA can work, and it also gives us some more hold area. Again, larger airplanes require or create a higher peak hour throughput, so we need places to put those people while they're waiting for their flights. Okay, so the 20-year plan, this is how it rolls up, anything in yellow on there is in the zero to five-year timeframe, anything in orange is in the six to 10-year timeframe, anything in blue is beyond 10 years, and the pink is really aspirational. Again, you have to have it on there for the FAA to ever fund it, so, for instance, this whole area out here would be a great aerospace complex for the future if they're decided, a lot of companies needed to be in here to, whether backstop the base or what have you. The yellows, you can see around the terminal, you can see in this picture that our ramp that we've just done increased the size by 50 percent, shows up really well there, but again, the yellow is within five years, and the runway extension itself, you can see, is in the six to 10 years. So again, the different phases, first phase would be to move that road, and then the next phase would be to come in and extend the runway. Okay, so now, questions on that? And I can provide any additional information if you should want it, of course, at any time, I'm happy to do that.
Andy, two things that I wanna mention or maybe ask. One is, if we look at this map and look at where the airport, where the circle is, drop down below to where Airport Road, right there, that's a really bad intersection at this point, where you come out of the airport, if you were to go to Taberna, you gotta make a right and you gotta make a left.
Yes, sir.
There was talk about that intersection being reworked, is that part of the plan or for the state, or is that on, oh, where is that?
That is also playing on the STI plan, that is an approved project in STI that the NPO is currently putting points toward as well.
Okay, because to me, that's really important with the Highway 70 improvement, that that gets done. The circle is really important.
Yes, sir.
But that intersection is, it's dangerous, number one, and number two, it's a real bottleneck.
Yes, sir, and also this Claremont Road, though in the current configuration, it is kinda weird for the folks that live down there. So the state's taking that on, they're receptive to it, they don't disagree with anything that you just said.
Okay.
So now it's just a matter of programming it and figuring out where you can get money. It did not score well when it was put together with these others, there's some thought that now it's broken up on its own, that it will score better this next round. Of course, we're on STI 6.0, and that's really a 2022 plan and beyond, so if we can get some support for this, and then ultimately you can see how these three things tie together as how people lots of times travel north and south, I think we'll continue to make people understand, and then the temporal aspect of that may get accelerated to do that.
When I moved here 20 years ago, I went to Raleigh when I needed to fly, and I did it pretty regularly. Then our rates went down locally at our airport, and I started using our airport for convenience, number one, it was so easy just to go there. I'm hearing that, you don't have anything to do with this, but I'm wondering what, and we're a small player in the big scheme of things, but American seems to be really having a lot of issues right now with cancellations, late flights, et cetera, not just necessarily... My daughter had to drive back from New York recently because her flight got canceled at, I don't know, whether it was Newark or whether it was LaGuardia, and she had to be back, her husband had to be back. Do we, are you aware of this? Can you?
That's a good question, and I go talk to other groups and I get, you know, beat up regularly on that. The first thing I like to remind people is, we are reflective of Charlotte's cancellation rates mostly, certainly on American, obviously, that makes sense. In the aggregate, cancellation rates are in the 15 percent range, they're 85 percent on time, that's kinda what the airlines shoot at. Now, what happens here is somebody gets canceled and there's not 30 other flights that day to choose from, so it makes, it sensitizes everybody here a little bit more to it than other places. But American is working on it. Delta, about three years ago, kinda tripled down on customer service, and a big thing is canceling, they like to get the corporate client, so they won't cancel a flight, they will delay a flight for 36 hours, but they won't cancel it, so their numbers look a lot different, but they are working on it. You know, I tell the airlines they've over-promised on a lot, even this 85 percent, because there's weather that they can't do anything about, and then, of course, mechanical, safety is the number one item, so they don't really, you know, cut corners on that. So we're, yes, sir, we're working on it, and I do take it as my responsibility, I talk to them about this all the time, and then what we do have going here, when something looks like it's gonna get jumbled up, you know, I will make a call, just ask them if they can get a deadhead in here to make up for a canceled flight earlier, and lots of times they will, and then also, or they may up-gauge an airplane later in the day to collect up some of those spokes. But you're right, nationwide, American's been taking bigger hits than the other airlines, but I think they're, they, more than the others, have their merger closest in their rearview mirror, so they're still struggling through that, where Delta's a few years beyond that, so I think we'll see improvements on that, and certainly as airplanes get bigger, there are newer airplanes, and then the serviceability of them comes up.
Well, I've heard comments that it's easier now to get to the RDU because of the bypass, and you can go up around the top, and it is true, I drove there the other day, not to the airport, but going that way, in less than two hours.
Right.
But then, you still gotta park, you gotta get to the, so it's certainly advantageous, but I have heard several people saying, hey, just to be safe, I'm going out of Raleigh.
Right, and when I talk to these people, I tell them, you know, you have a choice, and, you know, the choice is yours to make, and people have to make choices for reasons if they want that direct flight. I used to put my father on there so he didn't have to change flights. So we understand that, and quite frankly, we have about a half million people a year that inplane from this area, you know, our airport actually couldn't handle all that. Our leakage to Raleigh is about 38 percent as part of this study, that's not a bad number for a regional airport with a airport such as the size of Raleigh so close. Greenville has 80 percent leakage, because it's that much quicker to be able to get there. So they consider anything outside of 90 minutes to be the safer zone to where they'll continue to put flights in here, and they know there's value to people in those areas that are more than 90 minutes away from a larger hub. So we'll, we keep working that, and that's part of this, that we talk and we wrestle with and we think about all the time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Andy, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Have you been talking with the base, what's the possibility of the pink area down there for the aerospace you was talking about, of moving that up sooner, if the space, if the needs are going to be existing?
If the need arises, yes, sir. We're always looking at, as Jeff, he was in here earlier, Jeff and I went to an aerospace summit about a month ago, the North Carolina Military Business Committee runs, the general from DLA was down there, and that's what we were talking about, trying to foster the business. I don't know if you remember, in our state economic impact overall study, North Carolina is the second fastest-growing state for aerospace manufacturing, so that plays right in there because of the workforce that we have here, folks getting out of the military and things like that. So that's what that's designed for, and the good news is, in this budget, if it gets passed, there's money dedicated to the 10 commercial service airports, direct from the North Carolina General Assembly, and it is less restrictive in the fact that the FAA will not give us money for economic development, the state transportation will not give us money for economic development, but we would be able to use some of this money for economic development, because, again, the state legislators understand the economic engines that these facilities provide. So that's something that we would look at, the first thing, we would obviously have to clear this area, which is a nice byproduct for the airport, there's a lot of wildlife in there, and that's one of my, you know, bigger concerns on the safety side. So we would site prep that, and everybody probably in this room knows maybe better than me that a piece of land, there's a lot of money between it being a piece of land and it being a site that's ready to do anything on, so that's some of the first things that we would do, but yes, sir, we're tracking that very closely, General Blot, when he was on the authority, had us keyed into that.
Well, I think it's becoming more important now because of the shortage and the F-35 stepping up, and FRCE is getting 35 additional aircraft this coming year for rework and everything else, so I mean, we may have to take a look at that, and that's why I say you said 20, that may be something that may have to come up in five years.
Yes, sir. You can't see it as much, but right up in this area where we had a hurricane-damaged hangar that we just raised, that we're actually gonna build the new one over here where we put a new taxiway in with some state money, this will open up an area for some commercially-sized structures that have that same aeronautic access, so obviously, a much lower cost of entry to put something in over here than doing all this, but your senses are spot-on, sir.
Any other questions?
Okay, let me get to this grant piece, this is what we did last time, I'll go through this, we approved the, accepted the grant, and as part of that grant, that aircraft rescue and firefighting facility is really a payback, the authority went out on risk, kinda looking for the intersections between preparation and opportunity to create our own luck, went out on risk to get this, where I had this plan sitting on the floor of my office. plan sitting on the floor of my office right now. So what that allowed us to do, by doing that, is submit a supplemental grant request back in October. We've already gotten the environmental assessment back. This is it, signed off, finding of no significant impact. So we're planning complete. We have the environmental documentation complete. We've submitted our eligibility review. I'll show you a slide on that real quick. $4.9 million cost estimate. So that is playing at the FAA level right now. The good thing about this supplemental grant, we think it'll be 100%. So where I said, normally, we have to pay 10% local match, this would be 100%, which would save us about a half a million dollars if we get this grant. The only things we need to do is to get the permitting done, and we're ready for bid. So they called me a few weeks ago and said, hey, is this thing ready to go? We said, yes. They asked for a few more details. So it's playing right now. And the reason I'm standing here today, they thought there would be a 20 September suspense date to have it back. Talked to them Friday. Now they think it may slip over into the next fiscal year, because it's a supplemental grant and not part of their normal federal fiscal year. So what I'm asking for you today, that we've done in the past on some of these other grants, is for the Board of Commissioners to approve the chairman to sign this grant, if it comes in, you know, before we can have a next meeting, and I can come give you the normal grant details. So this is a fast-moving train. We've put ourselves in this position purposely to have this opportunity, and we just want to be able to take advantage of it, should it come up in the next couple of weeks.
Make sure I understand that the board understands, the public understands. You're talking about this as a shovel-ready project.
Yes, sir.
That they've called down, that there's funds and FAA that could be available for everything that's ready to move and fast-track.
Yes, sir. And we expect that if that grant offer's made, it's going to have a quick turnaround time. It doesn't necessarily lend itself to the two-week, you know, cycle of these public meetings.
Okay.
So moved.
Have a motion? Got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion here? You got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Everybody understands the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyer?
Yes.
Andy, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, ABC Board presentation, Chip Cagnana.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here. Appreciate the opportunity. Today is our annual briefing to the board, to familiarize you, because everything that we do, Craven County ABC Board flows from this mission statement. All of our financial thinkings, vision thinkings, and so forth flow from this vision statement. Introduce you to our board, and we have a new board member here, and he sits with you, and he's at the end. Thank you very much, Commissioner Penny Booker, for being a member on that. We also have Kathleen Cook from Havelock, she's a new member, and the rest of Charles, Charles is what you say, Charles Collins, and Carol was out of town as well. No other changes to our staff at this time, and we still have about 30, 32 employees working for the Craven County ABC Board. This was our goals and objectives for last year, and we're going to see how we did in our report card here. As a point, how did we come up with the growth, the growth percentage? We take that from the federal, when they come and visit Craven County in the spring of each year, that 2% represents the estimate for the tourists, tourism. So we tend to, you know, there's about seven or eight areas, manufacturing, so forth. We tend to look to that one as our line. So that's what we got, the 2% growth. And those others that we talked about, let you have a chance to take a look at that. You'll notice that we did change our branding and our logo since last time, since 1935. We use the Craven County logo, that's what it originally was. But we've kind of gone with a little updated, light green, more of a beachy theme, I think, you know? So we're kind of moving out that way. So this is what we were looking at last year at this time. Then, my friends, right away, in the year Florence came and changed quite a bit of what we were going to do. Here's General Manager Paul, and he's with Stone Management boarding up our stores last year. And of course, when you did the state emergency, Mr. Mark did that, it required us to close, and the clock started for us that we could not open until that was over. The downtown store got hit very, very heavy. We wanted to ensure, unlike some of the other counties, they had issues, not necessarily with looting, but the stores flooded so bad, doors were ripped off, and product was out in the street. Not that folks necessarily came in, the steel product, it just was kind of floating down. I'm here to tell you that what Paul and the rest of the team put together, we did not have one bottle of alcohol lost in Florence, which is frankly, from what I'm concerned, that's the most important aspect of our job, is control of alcohol. When you have something as devastated as this, we lost the downtown store, all the shelving, and the walls and so forth. So you can see the cost of $40,000, and then we lost about $165,000 in revenue. So we had to come back, we had to come back. It was not easy, but I'm here to say that Craven County was the first ABC Board to open up and report to the state that we were fully open out of 18 different, 18 counties in eastern North Carolina. At that time, working 18, 20 hours a day even, we managed to get it back online. Now, at first blush, the public side will say, gee, this is an ABC store, why would you do that? Well, it's important that we create normalcy in Craven County. Our stores have a dual mission. They sell through us, the general public, but we also sell to the restaurants, grills, bars, and so forth. We want to open them without the opportunity for an adult beverage. Frankly, most restaurants just about break even. The bar operation is frankly, very, very important to that life of our community. So we wanted to get back to a normal situation. We don't promote it outside, but we wanted to make sure that we get back in the upper service. So we did. And so here's our results, and here's the part that I'm very proud of. Even though we were out, when you added up all the days out, somewhere around 60 days total. That's all our stores, eight days here, 10 days here, 13 days, you know? But when you add that all up, frankly, I was expecting a very miserable year, plus the money that we were going to have to spend on coming back. That would have meant that we couldn't have done any of our modernization. But we were able to do that. Our folks worked very, very hard, and we did some extra things. Example was, we had a lot in Craven County, we had a lot of generosity from people from all over the country, and they were bringing things in, but the school board has no place to put them safely. They were in a bad, bad way. And our own convention center was in a very bad way. And the county manager called us up and asked us if we could take the convention centers, because we have a bonded area, an insured area. We had ALE agent come over and inventoried it. We have that to this day. I'm looking forward to the day we can turn it back over to Jack and the team. But it's safe there. And along with that, we had an area within our warehouse where we were able to get about, some of the vicinity of about $80,000 worth of items that other places had sent to us, other parts of the country had sent to us for our schools. And we took care of that. And recently, we, I believe you were there, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCabe, I mean, some of the others were there, but the board was awarded PIE's Volunteer Leadership Award of the Year for that effort. So we did that in behalf of you. None of this belongs to us, it's yours, and this is what we did on your behalf. We grew, we thought we were going to get around 2%, we actually did 2.6%, so we had a good year there. We were major sponsors this year of the Stop the Craving Anti-Opioid Program. We took care of our own law enforcement, and we have a very close relationship with Craven County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Hughes, and his great deputies. You can see there, we provided $40,000 to ALE for the overall contract that we have, and then to the Sheriff's Department and the local officers, $19,800. Very proud that we, along working with ALE, we upgraded our camera systems and our security systems, which were needed. We noticed that a lot of things in the, due to the hurricane, shorted our, they weren't as strong as we thought they were being, same thing with IT programs. So lessons learned there, we fixed that up. So you can see, we've done a very good year this year in spite of that. This is what our stores look like now, this Havelock. And one of the things that I said to Chairman Lyer, that we're going to, and Commissioner McCabe, is that we were going to put a big investment into that store, and we have. We put about $50,000 into that store, working on the parking lot, doing a lot of the marketing, doing inside work. That's what it looks like now. It has new hardwood floors. It's completely from the ceiling down to the floor, completely been done in the last three years. So that is a, matched that store against any store in the state of North Carolina. It's a gorgeous store with great employees. Vanceboro, the story of, just a few years ago, I came upon the board, I made a recommendation to Mr. Mark to close that store, because frankly, it was in the red, and it was costing the citizens of Craven County $30,000, $40,000 a year. And we were going to make a recommendation of closing. That has turned around to the point now, well, that's the little engine that could, and each year, it grows 15% to 20%. Our friends over in Pitt County hate me, they had to close their store in Arden because it lost so much money, thanks to the Vanceboro store. Glenberne is, of course, our flagship. It's looking great these days outside, and it also has some hardwood floors. So you can see, that's just a great-looking store, very, very safe, very sound. And that brings us to, what kind of a year did we do? We did $11,425,000 in sales. The tail of the bottle, let's take a look at that. You know, always, of course, the general fund makes up pretty well out of, I think, a business $11,000, $11 million, and you give 3.2 million, $3.3 million in taxes loan to the state. That's pretty good. But, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think the next one is the one that, is the one that you are going to like, is that I meant to promise this board that we would come up with $650,000 while we have a little, so we're going to give you $800,000, of which we've already given you $250,000, there's a check, so it's a half, $550,000.
Yeah, but it doesn't have my name on it.
Has all our names on it, the county of Craven, so there we are. But, you know, also, you'll notice that our jurisdictions, and they're important partners in this, we get 90%. My friends in the towns and cities which rely get 10%. So you can see the city of New Bern, they were pretty happy the other night when I went and presented them their check. The little town of Vanceboro didn't get a whole bunch this year, sorry for that part. And that's because we made about $30,000 of investment there, and we also made an investment in human HR. The lady who has brought us this way, we made her a manager. We thought that that was the right thing to do. So Vance, we're planting the seeds there in Vanceboro, and I'm sure next year, they'll get several thousand dollars more. You know, we, this year, we had to, under the statute, we had to give a little bit more money for the rehab. You'll notice that at the bottom, that's for the anti-underage drinking education or opioid crisis. Last year, the county decided to have that money, and I applaud the county, I might add, for that thought. We had no issue at all, we turned that paperwork in, mismanaged it to audit it to the state. They thought that was the right thing to do. And as you know, North Carolina had a reduction in this crisis, and that's, so that $61,000 is also coming to the county, along with the other rehab, $32,000. You add that up, you can see, we are approaching a million dollars in distribution from Craven County ABC Board to our county and our jurisdictions. We're just, MacArthur, about $3,000 less than a mill, and that's almost money. So we're very proud of that this year. There's what it looks like, our health, and for all the businessmen and women in here, that's a pretty nice slope. But I want to tell you something about this, just so you'll know. Craven County does not have issues with alcohol at all expense. That's not our thought. Matter of fact, where we rank, we're 20, you know, the population's 17, but we're 24th in per capita drinking. But we're number eight when it comes to drinking, if you will, quality alcohol, the top shelf. You know, nearly got to pay 80 to 100, we have bottles of alcohol, it's $1,200, and we routinely sell it. Now, we have alcohol, $300 to $400 a bottle, we sell a lot of it. Craven County has a reputation in the state for high-end alcohol, which we don't sell many bottles. So if you see the relationship here, 17 population, 24 per capita drinking, eight with the high-end alcohol. So we don't, our people don't try to sell a whole bunch of alcohol to people. We try to upsell them with it. One good bottle of alcohol, and if you're going to pay $300 a bottle, you don't want to see the bottom of it very quickly. So that is our philosophy. We feel that we have a controlled substance, and it's our duty to take care of that. We don't go pushing alcohol. We've, last year, had one instance of underage drinking coming into a store. We have had a lot of very aggressive police work, making sure that that doesn't happen in Craven County. So I will tell you that, just so our friends who might have some bad ideas about that. This is where we're going, we'd like to go this year in our goals and objectives. And, you know, we're working very, very hard to get that store over in Bridgeton. Ran into some unusual problems, but I'm here to tell the board today, we're going to be coming back to see you very quickly. Yes, Mr. Booker, so we can arrange that. But we have finally got everything that we need to come to this board and ask you for permission to purchase that land. And I will give everybody here a heads up, that that building will be the most unique building in North Carolina, and that's why we're only going to ask the board for the land at that time to use. We're going to come back to ensure you, because this building is going to be unusual. It's going to be a dual-use building, and we want to work. I see our Emergency Management Center man here. We're going to be man here, we're going to be working with him, because that building is going to be a building that in case of emergencies, the county will hopefully use a goodly portion of that building. Craven County Sheriff's Department's going to have a, going to be, work with them to get an office over there with our ALE. We know that once that bridge hits forty miles an hour, the north county, part of the county gets difficult, so we thought the TRBC might, board might come up to you with a suggestion of a different kind of building that we can sell alcohol in, yes, but when it comes time that you need a building on that side of the county, that you maybe will have one. So, that's going to, we're going to come to you on that. So, there we are, and we thank you for your trust and confidence. An add-on that we just received, I will use this opportunity, under the statute, we have to have the board approve our policy, travel policy, and it mimics the county, that's one thing. The other thing we do is courtesy, we provide a copy of our audit, which we just got, there'll be one for every board member, I'll make sure that man has that. Tells the story of one of the finest boards in North Carolina, and they feel one of the top five percent efficiency boards in North Carolina. So, I'm proud of that, proud of my board, and proud of all the help we got out of playing authority here. Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the board, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Cagnan, I'm pretty sure that you're keeping up with what the General Assembly is having conversation about and considering statutory changes to improve the effectiveness, effectiveness and efficiency of the ABC system and the modernization of it. Can you give us, bring us up to date on the discussions that are taking place?
Well, the, you know, the state's been having some issues last several years, big really with privatization, I mean, we're, we're accustomed. It, that portion of the bill failed, failed miserably at this particular time, when you look at the amount of money that the alcohol frankly delivers to the General Assembly, over a half a billion dollars and going up, they, they could not come close, it was less than half under privatization. They were a little unnerved by that. Still, there is a modernization aspect. They're requiring the North Carolina ABC Commission to come up with a whole new system of putting, you know, the warehouse, how we get our alcohol, and making sure it goes out properly on bid. They're making sure that distilleries, there was quite a bit this year on the distillery part of North Carolina, has grown from just nine distilleries back up to over fifty, kind of a cottage industry in North Carolina. Frankly, one of a few counties, a dozen, our neighborhood, neighboring counties do have a distillery. So, there was a lot of new work, and trying to make their work better. It was very, very archaic how they had it, and the same thing with brewery, microbrewery operations, very difficult for them, that's going to be relieved. The effect on Craven County frankly is not a whole bunch. Where we see it is there's an opportunity for us to, right now, our liquor-by-the-drink people come to us, and there's an opportunity now for us to deliver it to them, make it a little bit more efficient for them and us frankly. But frank, tastings, there is opportunity for in-store tastings. Our stores, we have three stores that lend themselves to that, you can see when you saw that openness now, we may do that, we may offer tastings, but we're going to do that very closely, we're going to do that very closely with Sheriff Hughes. We're really watching that, but if we have a distiller that asks us to do a tasting, we're, the board has to consider this and so forth. But it's not heavily for Craven County, I would, some stores, some of the distilleries and some of the large enterprises have some, have some questions to do. Frankly, sir, we're up in the front of the power curve on a lot of this. We've been modernizing and getting ready for this, and how we, how we go about it and our office staff and training and all this. This new building that we're going to talk about is going to have a training feature, we hope, it's going to have an opportunity to have an area that our liquor-by-the-drink establishment people can come in, bartending people can come in, and you receive training from ALE. So, we're, we're up in front of it, and I don't see us with any great changes in Craven County. I see that it's going to be a challenge to the state as we move on, this was the first move, I think there'll be other moves, and perhaps in another eight to ten years, privatization might be a serious, serious challenge in the state, but not right at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you, I haven't talked to our legislative delegation, Senator Sanders and so forth, I mean, do they, have they taken a position on it and how they would vote or how they feel?
Well, they did, they did take a position, because they actually did, the House, there was a House Bill, nine fifty-six, nine fifty-six that was voted down in our, we, our legislative people on the House Bill voted it down, it never, so that never made it to a Senate bill.
So, they opposed it, yeah?
He's talking about our local.
Yes, yes, Special, Kidwell did oppose it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple. On your damages, did your, did the local insurance pay for it, FEMA, or how did you pay for your?
No, we, we ended up, because of the nature of the deductible and some other issues, we ended up, you know, we didn't get a whole bunch other than the downtown store, the others were three thousand, five thousand, eight thousand, and so, we ended up taking that on ourselves.
So, the whole forty thousand came out of Europe?
It did.
Okay.
And we, because we do, we're not, it's not that we're self-insured, we're not, we have insurance, but it's just, we didn't make our deductible, three, three percent of the total value, you know, one of, one of these kinds of things. We are looking into something perhaps better, but at the time, we didn't make the deductible.
Okay. Manager, I'm getting like my vice chair, I can't remember from the last meeting. Have we approved their travel policy for this coming year, or is that coming before us?
I believe he's bringing it before you, it has not been approved this year, was approved last year.
Right, right.
Not this year.
Okay, so you're going to be bringing that forward?
Yes, sir, matter of fact, Miss, the man even has a copy of it.
I have a copy of it, but you haven't presented it to the board.
No, no, I haven't, I haven't, it's not physically on your.
He just provided it this morning.
Okay.
We'll put it, if it meets the timeline of the ABC Board, we can put it on your next agenda for the first October meeting.
Absolutely, and because I was going to negotiate a time coming back, and that's when I was going to have it done, sir, just so you'll know.
Okay, we'll be prepared.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Department Matters, Planning, Don Baumgartner, Planning Director, Patrick Baker, Natural Resources Conservationist II. Subdivision for Approval, Perrytown Estates, Request for Addition of State Maintained Secondary Road Systems in Contract Award Hurricane Matthew Disaster Recovery Stream Debris Removal Project. Don, how are you?
Doing good, doing good. We're here this morning to present the Perrytown Estates Phase Two subdivision. The property is owned by B and H Enterprises of New Bern, it was surveyed by Thomas Engineering. It's located over in Township Seven off the Perrytown Loop Road, it contains approximately two lots on 1.93 acres. Each of these properties are proposed to be served by the county's water and individual septic systems. In order to move forward with this subdivision, as vote to approve, the subdivision is needed.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item is dealing with the road addition request. This is for, to approve Siddler Lane, Linden Rain Boulevard, Rose Garden Court, and Falken Court within the Linden Rain subdivision. We are asking for the standard SR2 road addition resolution to be passed by the board so that it can be forwarded to the NC DOT for their final consideration and acceptance into the state's maintenance system. The roads have been looked at, and the state is willing to accept these roads once they receive this resolution of support. So, a vote is needed to approve this SR2 standard road addition resolution.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Next item, Patrick Baker and Chad Strong are going to be presenting, dealing with Hurricane Matthew Disaster Recovery Stream Debris Removal.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, on August twenty-second, staff received informal bids for stream debris removal services, for removal of debris from Slocom Creek Southwest Prong, Slocom Creek East Prong, Reedy Branch, Brys' Creek and Great Branch, Scott's Creek, Riverbend Canal and Harlow Canal. These streams are the remaining creeks as part of the Hurricane Matthew State Disaster Recovery Funds, which is 100% grant funded. After review and consideration, staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners award Round Two of State Disaster Recovery Project Funds to J&amp;J Environmental LLC and MCS Services as follows. MCS Services will receive Brys' Creek, Great Branch, and J&amp;J Environmental will receive all the other streams listed, totals of 131, 294, 72 for J&amp;J Environmental, and 101, 217 for MCS Services. Now, the plans are for the contractors to begin removing debris upon execution of the contracts, and are expected to be complete by mid-December, allowing inspection of the creeks by state, by the state, and project closeout by December 31st, 2019, and extension is available if requested. Our request, requested action is that the Board of Commissioners award the Round Two of the State Disaster Recovery Project to J&amp;J Environmental LLC, an amount of 131, 294, 72 cent, and MCS Services, an amount of 101,217 dollars, a total of 232,511 dollars, 72 cent. For these, and these project awards have the standard contingency fund available. Also needed is the ability for the chairman to execute contracts. And up here on the screen is a map of where these are located, of course, Riverbend Canal, Reedy Branch, splits Craven and Jones County, Brys' Creek and Great, Great Branch here, Scott's Creek up by the airport, South, Slocom Creek Southwest Prong and East Prong, and then, of course, Harlow Canal in the corner.
Entertainer motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, any comments? I'd just like to make a comment to the audience. You think the government is slow, this should be an example. This is Matthew, two and a half years away, passed, just now getting approval and funding. But we're happy, and we're pleased we got it, believe me, but it's not an easy process, and we thank you for going forward. All right, have a motion and a second, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyne?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Patrick, Jack, have you heard anything from the state about any funds that might come through for Hurricane Florence for our creeks?
Well, I can tell you, we, we applied for Hurricane Florence funding right after the storm, whenever we were available to, right after the storm. And the way the state is using our Hurricane Florence disaster money, they are, it is contingent upon us applying for the federal EWP funding, that's the funding we're using for the shoreline erosion. Now, we applied for the federal EWP, but the problem is the feds have not even assessed our stream debris removal sites yet. So, until they make an assessment and determine whether it's eligible for EWP, we won't get the state Florence funds. But we've requested nearly a million dollars for stream debris from Florence, state floods.
Have you evaluated the amount of damage that you got in the creeks that you cleaned out so far?
We've not evaluated all of them. Now, we've got some examples, you know, just like before and after pictures, the day before Florence and then the day after, and you see the debris in there.
Is it worse than what you had prior to with Matthew? I mean, are you seeing more trees, more?
What we, well, we actually did, actually, we flew, I forgot, we flew the creeks, took the helicopter trip, and it, there is debris in there, but it's not as bad as I was expecting it to be. So, and I think that's because of our cleanup before, you know, literally all you're seeing down is what was in there from Florence, so it's not as bad as what I would have thought it to be.
So, timeline going forward, I mean.
Timeline, well, I think the problem with us and the feds is we've had them so busy on all them shoreline sites that, now, granted, all those have been evaluated, so there's no reason for them not to be able to go out and look at our stream debris sites, and I can push the issue with them, so Hurricane Florence money would be, I could, I would estimate within the next year, we would know something.
Just last comment, and thank you for allowing me to ask the question, but, you know, if you talk to folks that have property, homes along Swift Creek, Vice Chairman, or Little Swift Creek, and also Core Creek, I mean, you know, every last one of them will contribute, the work that's been done in the past for the lack of, you know, I mean, they haven't had the damage as a result of the last few hurricanes.
Yes.
And so, it's definitely a benefit to our citizens, you know, and something that this board has taken seriously, and I commend them for doing that, but we must continue. I think that's a lot of money, but we can't let it, you know, go to the wayside, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kim, as a county, we've been putting more and more money into that effort. I want to also thank Patrick for the bee bids on Broad Creek Road. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mark gave me a way in on the Beaver Control Program that we ran. Last year, we were under contract with a company out of Onslow County called Beaver Begone. They provided routine inspection and removal of beaver and nutria along, I guess, everything in the western part of the county, is that correct, Chad? Inadvertently, we didn't budget it this year, something that just got left out, I think, because of the amount of work we were trying to do on the streams. We do have a number, and actually, I was going to mention in my manager's comment anyway, if you like, I could put that on the next agenda for discussion and review, if the board wants to continue that type of program.
Well, I'll leave it up to the board, but I think we need to move forward with it. If we've left it off, we've done it ever since I've been on this board, and I think it saved us in the long run.
Well, this is, this is the new, well, we've always done a Beaver program through the USDA. Last year was the first year we did the contract with the Onslow County.
Want to bring it forward, the next one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving forward, next is Public Building Approval Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method for Courthouse and Emergency Services Information Technology Facility, Gene Hodges, Assistant County Manager.
Good morning, board.
Good morning, Gene.
On June seventeenth, the Craven County Board of Commissioners selected Oakley Callier Architects as the architect for the repair and mediation work at the Courthouse Emergency Services Information Technology Facility, that's a mouthful, but that's what it is. OCA has been working on designs and plans for the temporary repairs, and are now recommending that the county consider using Construction Manager at Risk, CM@R, as a delivery method for this project. In the past, the county has traditionally utilized the design, bid, build method of delivery. A project is then scaled to meet an agreed-upon budget number through value engineering or changing the scope of the design. In the CM@R method, a construction manager is picked through a request for qualification, the RFQ process, and the CM@R and the architect work together throughout the design. the RFQ process, and the CM@R and the architect work together throughout the design and construction process. The team works with the county, the team being the CM@R and the architect, works with the county to develop a guaranteed maximum price, which is another abbreviation of GMP that you'll see, and the project is developed and scoped mindful of this price. The end result is a project that is delivered on a fast-track schedule with little to no change orders. Due to the complexity and the evolving nature of this project, the architect feels that the CM@R method is the best way for Craven County to deliver this project in the most efficient manner possible. So we've got some present, we've got a presentation of information to share this. This is a new way of doing a project that Craven County has not contemplated in the past. It will require, if the board feels that this is in the best interest, it will require a resolution be passed. That resolution was included in your packets. I've got Tim Oakley and Ed Collier, they're going to be here, they're going to, they're going to show the presentation and the definition of what the CM@R process means and how it works and the benefits to us for this project, and I'll also be available for any questions. And then I'll come back and we'll discuss the action the board decides to take. The one thing just to keep in mind, what we're finding is we're moving through this project, this is probably a Rubik's Cube of a project. It is one of the most complex projects that we've probably been involved in, because you're working in a building that was designed to never be modified. I mean, it is a cement block building. It is made, it was an old jail. So it was made just as, just as, just as challenging as it is, as you want to kind of keep people in and not keep, keep people in and not let people in, it's also designed to, it's also designed not to be modified very easily. And the, because the project evolves as you're moving forward, the idea is that then a CM at risk methodology, delivery method, will allow us to be more nimbly responsive to what they find as changes or what they find that may need to be addressed. So with your indulgence, we'll ask, Tim Oakley will come up. We've got, also in your packet is this one pager kind of comparison of the different methods, and then he's got a PowerPoint presentation that's also in there that should be, or there's multiple slides, Dennis, that was sent to you.
Chief, if I may, manager.
Yes, sir.
If I may, with this being so complexed and everything else, I would like to have the board the availability to ask questions going through the slides so we don't forget or think about it. So if any board members have any questions on anything that's coming up, instead of waiting, let's get it out, because if you've gone through this and if you haven't worked with this before, it is complexed.
It is. I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. We appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning and discuss this delivery process. A couple of things, the placemat, if you will, kind of goes over the different delivery methods that are out in the marketplace in North Carolina, with primarily three of them being what public agencies use, design, bid, build, design, build, and CM at risk. They are primarily the three delivery processes that are out there. The CM at risk process has been available to public agencies for the last 18 to 20 years. In more recent times, since 2013, they expanded, the legislative bodies expanded that to allow design, build, and design, build, bridging documents as another delivery method. As Gene was saying, in this particular project for the courthouse, there are many different layers to this project. And as we go through the design process, we've discovered that having the ability to have real-time input, costing input that's valid, can help us make decisions that will serve the long-term interest of Craven County. And I do encourage you, as we go through this presentation, ask questions. It's mostly words. Oops. The CM at risk process is basically the process of solicitation of the contractor, very much like you do the architects and engineers. It's a qualification-based selection process that you go through, that you interview, question their history, what they've done, and then they work with the design team and the owners throughout the entire process of design of the project. At the same time, they're doing costing, so it's an open book. So unlike a traditional hard bid where all you ever see is the final number, this, you're watching the numbers or have the opportunity to see the numbers as they're being developed in the project. I can't talk and push a button at the same time. Any questions on that particular piece? The at-risk piece of this puzzle is the contractor is guaranteeing he's going to deliver this project in a timely manner, he's going to guarantee the cost, and traditionally, the quality of the work is at a higher level because they are soliciting subcontractors that they know can deliver the type of project that needs to be done. Being a public project, they also have to bond it, it's 100% bonded for the protection of the project, and they assume the risk. If they miss it, it's theirs. If they don't deliver on time, or once they've given you the guaranteed maximum price and nothing changes about this project, if their cost overrun, it's their problem, not the county's. They also have an opportunity, the state mandates that they carry a contingency within this project, and that contingency is to help offset some of the unforeseens of the project. If those dollars aren't spent, well, then they are the county's dollars. They come back. Some agencies, some public entities will set up sharing to kind of a risk and reward type of deal, but generally, most of our clients go, hey, it's our money, why do we want to do that? But the GC does guarantee the price of the project. Once we've developed a scope completely and the number they give you is the number, it won't exceed that cost of the project. Any, any questions there?
I have a question. If it comes in by chance below cost?
The money's yours. The open book, you know, throughout this process, they're giving us line item cost of all of the components of the project, and you, we track it as we go through, just like we typically would do on an application for payment where they schedule all the values. In a hard bid, the number's the number. If they schedule $100,000, you spend $100,000. Whether they spent 75 or 80, that costs you 100. In this particular case, if they spent 85, well, the 15 is the county's money. It, that's, the contractor is working from a, they give you a fee in the beginning, once the scope is known, and that's their, their number. So they don't have an incentive to try to escalate the cost of the project. It is a fixed cost. The services, they break their, their scope of the work into two categories. One's called pre-construction phase, the other's construction phase. In the pre-construction phase, one, they actually, once you go through an interview process and you select that particular firm, they establish a fee to do the pre-construction phase. Typically, in a project this size, it's somewhere around 1% to 1.5%, 2% would be the fee that they charge for that. And what that gives you is their team, their complete team, of estimators, project managers who work with the owner and the design team, hand in glove to develop the project, to try to, to discover all the unforeseens as well as put price tags on all those items. Most of the firms that offer CM at risk are typically a little more robust firm. They have a much more developed management style and delivery. There are a number of firms in eastern North Carolina that do it, but it really does take a little higher level of management and skill. A lot of them have either construction managers on their teams or engineers on their team to help work with the owner and the architects in developing that. When we move into the actual construction phase, again, it's all open book. They bring all the various subcontractors to the table. We require them to get three competitive prices on all the major components of the project, so there's still a competitive piece there. What we've done, where in the world, today's world of general contractors, very few of them self-perform any work. They all go out and buy it.
With the bid opening?
With a bid opening, a hard bid, sorry.
I mean, the subcontractors have to?
Yes. Okay, sorry. When we do hard bid, we give the bidder our set of plans. They go out and gather their pricing from one, two, or 12 subcontractors, whatever they see fit to do. In a CM at risk, they take our plans and they break it down into packages. Every division of the specifications are broken down internally, and then they go out and solicit three prices or try to achieve three prices on all of the components. So on our bid day, bid opening, we would have a room full of people, and there may be 36 different bids on different components of the project. Once those bids are received, there's a evaluation process, a scoping of every bid or whomever the parent low bidder is, to make sure that their scope of work is in fact what's in the documents, which gets back to the guarantee piece. They're making sure that what they have received bids on are in fact what the intent of the documents are. So it's a lot of management and control process so that when we start the actual project, they're not surprised us. The sub doesn't go, oh, I didn't include that. It's already been vetted. Any questions on that piece? The elements of the delivery process, as I said earlier, it is a qualification-based selection process, where the county will release a request for qualifications and the various firms will reply. There's not a dollar value at this point. It's strictly a process of qualification verification of the firms that are, that are responding to that. It does require them to participate early. As soon as they're onboard, they're working with the team to try to get us to the project delivery point. The ultimate goal at the end is the guaranteed price, the time, and the quality of the project. And in today's marketplace, it is very difficult to find qualified subs for the project, and especially in eastern North Carolina after the floods and all the work, it's really difficult to find participants in the work. So most of the time on the CMs, I should say all the times on CMs, or the ones we've been involved with, they bring a very qualified list of subs to the table. They have a very strong following. Again, most of the firms are larger, they carry a lot of weight in the marketplace, and they tend to want to deliver on the guaranteed part because they are at risk if they don't. Questions on that? The flexible process and tailoring deliveries, deliverables, that's important on this project because, as we said, there's a lot of different layers to it, and we have to evaluate several different components of the courthouse in that we are dealing with the old jail, which is a rather tough animal, but we're also dealing with the historic part of the courthouse, which is a completely different construction method, as well as the annex. So we've got three different types of construction on this one project, and we have historic preservation as well, and trying to make the conversion from when the jail was built, it was an institutional occupancy, which has the most restrictive requirements of a construction process. It is no longer used as a jail, so now we're going to requalify the building to a business occupancy, which, and I may get into weeds here, it changes some of the code requirements of the building, which would be in the favor of the county and end up costing a few less dollars to make some of these things happen. But in doing that, we need to make evaluations of how we go about demolishing, cutting, cutting some of the parts of the building and determining, is it the best way to proceed from a dollar standpoint? We don't want to just go down the track of, we, we think it's the best way to go without really vetting all the costs that are associated with it. The risk, the trade-offs between the owner and the CM, you know, one of the things are that you hear a lot is CM at risk is not the least expensive way to deliver a project in day-one cost. And that is true. It's not. But our history says that in competitive low bid, the low bid that you receive on bid day hardly ever holds up at the end of the project because it is laden with change orders and cost escalation. That is inherent to that market delivery price or method. In the end of the day, our experience has been on the CM projects, that you do get a higher-quality project, you do get it in a more timely manner, and you, we've not had an owner to date that goes, darn, I wish I'd gone the other way because I really liked that fight. It's a very, what's the word I'm looking for? Teamwork-oriented delivery method that everybody on day one is pulling on the same end of the rope. As opposed to a traditional bid, hard bid, there's a lot of head knocking and different motivations. In this particular method, we're all working for the owner's satisfaction and success, which I probably got ahead of myself because that is very much some of the advantages that I just pointed out. Dependent on the project type, and again, CM at risk projects by statute are typically a $5 million threshold is where their minimum efficiency lies. However, there's certain county, Dare County is one, they use CM at risk for everything they do. We're working on a project with them right now that's at the $4.8 million threshold. The more expensive the projects become, which is kind of an indication of the more sophisticated, more complicated they are, the higher, the more efficiency you have in a CM at risk. This particular project with the courthouse, dealing with the mitigation, the put-back, the possible renovation of Clerk, and then the EOC, it becomes very convoluted in trying to figure out the best way to achieve the goals of the project. And so CM at risk is why, this is why we recommend it to the county to help us with They typically back again to open book, cash flow. They are showing you all the expense to the project and can show you from cash flow standpoints of when you need dollars to do different aspects of it. They have a very aggressive outreach program for hub. They typically will set up pre-bid meetings with all hub firms and have luncheon learns and, as well as create early payment processes to involve hub groups within the process of the project.
Explain hub.
Hub, historically underutilized businesses, minority firms, they typically have a very strong outreach in that regard. Any questions there? The disadvantages, as I said earlier, it may not be the lowest cost. It typically is not. It does give higher-quality product and a faster delivery. As I said earlier, it doesn't always fit all projects because of cost models, it just becomes... It just becomes burdensome in smaller projects. The different owner involvement and tracking, as owners, you can choose to be as active as you want to be in a project. In a CM at risk, just like in our typical design, we involve our owners quite a lot. If your building, how you use it, you don't need us to dictate how you're going to use your facility. But some owners are hands-off, they say, "Go do it." But this particular one, you can have as much as you want as involvement. Obviously, it's a qualification-based selection process, so the presentation is a sales pitch. So the verification of the firms that you interview and talk to or look at, you need to vet that, make sure that they are who they say they are, what they can do, what they can, they say they can do.
Let me ask one question here before you go on to the next page. I want to make sure the board, as the whole knows and the audience knows, that got everybody, getting everybody concerned, I think, is may not be the lowest cost. I think everybody has to realize it may not be the lowest cost, as you stated earlier, on day one.
Correct.
Because everybody knows what that building is and what it looks like now. So I know we have to say it's the lowest cost, but in the long run, it could very well be the lowest cost. We're setting the price already.
Yes, sir.
We're setting the price upfront at a set price, which could come in lower than what we set it. But if we set that same price, we're got that plus any change orders on top for all the unknowns.
Yes, sir.
So I think the public needs to know that, that we're not giving away their money by not taking the lowest cost because, from my perspective, and I don't know how the board's going to feel on this, but this is probably the lowest cost of where we're going to get for that type of building.
Absolutely.
That type of building.
Yes, sir. This project is complex, and when I say that, that's probably code for, it could be riddled with opportunities for change orders.
Yes.
The time-saving, because the general contractor is working with the design team from the beginning to the end, we start creating opportunities to accelerate the project from the costing standpoint and the bidding, where we can have early release of certain parts of the project and start those ahead of the schedule. Ordinarily, the projects end about two months earlier than conventional construction, and that would be, again, back on conventional construct, delivery methods. Time tends to get away. Contractors will typically get a little bit behind because of sub-delays or weather. They will say, "We'll make this up." Well, there's one thing you can't make up, and that's time. It just doesn't happen. So the acceleration of this method is their knowledge in the beginning and being part of the team to develop it enables them to accelerate their work throughout the whole project. Any questions? One piece I forgot to add, and it's important. When we go through this pre-construction services phase, and they develop their, what's called a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, if for any reason that price doesn't ring true to the board, you go, "No, we're done, we're out." And you can take it, you can go back and go to a conventional hard bid. It doesn't take that away from you. You just excuse that particular firm, and then we open it up to a competitive low bid situation. We've never had that happen, but that is open to the board. Your hands are not tied.
And it doesn't change the design?
No, it doesn't change, no, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So you're saying you can sever the tie when you feel if there is a reason to do so? What's the cost of doing that?
You pay the pre-construction cost, the fee that you've already agreed to, for the services they've offered through that point.
And that's the one and a half, two percent you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I've had two experiences with big, complex construction projects here in eastern North Carolina. One went with the lowest bid, and it, over the long term, the lowest bid has turned out to be, hands down, the most expensive bid for it, as things often happen. On the other hand, having gone with another one that was the construction manager at risk for a complex historic building where you didn't know what you were going to find when you started taking it apart, having the construction manager be responsible for bringing the project in, personally responsible, as in it came out of his pocket, to manage the cost so that it came in at a particular one or eat it, it worked. It was timely, it delivered a high-quality project because the onus was frankly on the construction manager. And all of those change orders and all of the complexities that the oops we hadn't planned on, the onus was on the manager to make it happen, and he, they, the firm, did. So I was well pleased with it.
Good. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, I was, from a personal level, this delivery method's been there out in the marketplace a long time. And I'm hard-headed, and I think that our documents are as good as any documents that are ever created, and we can, we can go out and get a hard, competitive low bid on the project and work our way through it. Over the years, especially in the last four to five, where the marketplace changed dramatically after the recession and we lost a lot of tradesmen, it became a really difficult place to deliver a project to an owner's satisfaction in a competitive low bid market. And so the CM, we just started doing more and more CM projects and projects such as this. This is a good delivery process that helps safeguard the county's interests.
Question for the manager. I came to this situation late. I was never, I was never in this building. I was in the old courthouse a time or two, but never in the newer part, the jail, the EOC, et cetera. What I heard was, I heard a lot just now, but what I, one of the things I heard was it's three different pieces. One is the historic, one is the annex, which is not historic, I assume, and one is the jail, which is clearly not historic. It was never built to be what we're using it as. And again, forgive me if I'm way off base here. I was amazed, always amazed, as I walked by this building, that there was a ramp that went down and that it was underground, if you will. I never could quite figure out who, hopefully that person's not listening or alive, but whoever came up with the idea of going down underground when we're a block away from the river, never made a lot of sense to me. Where I'm headed with this is, everything has its time limit. I can envision one of these big, tall cranes with a big wrecking ball attached to it. Am I crazy to say, maybe it's time to just not restore this thing when it was never built? It's always going to have problems as far as what it was designed to be versus what we're trying to make it. Can I?
Yeah, I mean, it's a really interesting thought, and I got to be honest with you, I've never contemplated demolition of it, just because, you know, it's always been something that we had a plan to redevelop into something else. When we built the new judicial complex, I mean, no one had a concrete idea about what that building would be. Somebody just envisioned it, an expansion of court, expansion of county government, some purpose. I think you have a lot of good points, and I'll tell you, I don't know if Mr. Gene remembers, but when we did the initial transformation to the emergency operations center, I thought it was going to be pretty simple. I mean, it was a big concrete room, you just go in, put some walls up. It's not that easy. Just drilling through the floor to get some of the telephone and data lines was the most god-awful expense I can imagine and took weeks and weeks and weeks because it's solid. I mean, Gene, Gene really, I don't know if he did it justice earlier, no offense to what he was saying, but the whole purpose of the building was to keep people in. So there are no penetrations, there are no easy ways to get through things. To your point, yeah, it's probably more expensive to do this. I mean, quite frankly, if we had a barren dirt out there or just building up, yeah, it'd probably be cheaper, and we'd probably design it the way that we wanted. I mean, we'd have the elevator shaft over here and all these things. However, as we've looked, Gene, and we've gone back and now have some more formal plans since Florence, it does assimilate itself really nicely to the courthouse. It does provide them natural progression. Is it the right site for an emergency operations center and a 911 center? I don't think so anymore, not after what we went through a year ago today, really. You know, does it have a purpose once you abandon the first floor of the Sallyport area? Yeah, I think it does. I think the clerk of court's at the point, Gene, and you might have to kind of help me here, but I think she's at a file point that we got to do something for her. We have to have a place for her to move files. I think you're seeing the same thing with the district attorney and our judges, and quite frankly, with this, what is it, raise the age program, the juvenile, where the age, whether you're adult or not, I mean, that's a whole nother burden we're going to have to start preparing ourselves for because it's coming. So to answer your question, I mean, it's not something I've really thought about. I certainly see how you get there. I think, though, the cost may be, I mean, Tim, I don't know if you guys have even analyzed that, what it would look like.
We haven't looked at taking it down and putting something by. However, if we go this method we're talking about, we can certainly put that on the table.
Yeah.
We certainly know some sizes of what we're, spaces need to be, and it can be a part of the evaluation process.
Right. Did that help at all on that? A little bit?
Yeah, I think so. As I said, I'm not proposing that we do that, I'm only asking the question. At some point, instead of spending a kajillion dollars to restore a building that isn't really practical, maybe, maybe.
Sure.
Would we be wise to take it down and either construct something on that site that fits or move it elsewhere? You mentioned the EOC. As you, I believe you said to me during the storm, talking again about, not the latest one we just had.
Right.
The big one, Florence, that it was touch and go even being in that place. And I was on the board of Alderman when we did an EOC out at a safe spot at the water department. Didn't cost an awful lot of money to do it when we were doing that, building the building anyway. So, anyway, I don't need to pursue it. I just, it's just something that I think we need to always keep in the back of my mind, our mind, and sometimes, there's an old saying, if you put lipstick on a pig, what you basically have is a pig with lipstick.
Mr. Chairman, I may be getting ahead of us here too in the questions I wouldn't ask. Commissioner brings up a good point. I don't think none of us, we definitely, when somebody hears this in what our discussion is, we, I mean, I don't think we would ever tear that building down. I mean, it is a historical structure. It's a part of our city, it's part of our county. But I will, you know, go a step further and say that really, I mean, I'm not to the point, I think, as a commissioner, that I'm ready to start looking at further investment. I mean, fix, I'm all for fixing problems that we've got to fix over there, but I don't think we're at the discussion point as a board to go and invest up to $9 million over there in that facility. And again, I might be getting ahead of you, but, I mean, to just fix what we've got to fix over there, to make it functionable for what we've got to do right now, what, do we still need this construction manager to do that? You think so?
Yes, sir. You bring up a good point. I'm going to the resolution that was prepared for the board, it's attachment 5.1. Go to the, and it's page one of that. It's the, let's see, the third from the last and the second from the last paragraphs in there, one that starts with, whereas counties evaluating several options. You've got, you've got several challenges, and this is where it gets complex. One is, we've got to make modifications now that repair Hurricane Florence damage, and I believe, Tim, and that's about $2 million roughly is your rough estimate on that. Would that be correct?
The very, the very base, yes.
Very base?
We, yes, we updated Friday.
Okay.
So that it was a little more.
A little more than that. So what that basically does is, right now, you've got challenges. You have no elevator in the EOC side, and that's a problem. You've got no bathrooms in the old courthouse side because they were all also at the same grade. So we're now actually underneath the old historic courthouse. There were two sets of bathrooms that are gone.
Correct.
You've got air conditioning, you've got fire alarm, you've got, Gene, help me here, I'm going through all the various system, fire suppression system issues that got to be fixed. So Project A was always just repairing that, that was a number, we were looking at FEMA and insurance. Craig, you might have to jump in here, that was going to be some of the cost, because that's putting back like, kind of things to what was damaged, Gene, is that correct?
Correct. That's putting back like, kind of, but one of the things you've got to do when you start doing this amount of work is you've got code upgrades that you've got to put into. ADA accessibility issues that haven't been addressed in the past because you didn't have to do the work.
Correct. So to take the FEMA money, you then have to jump through some extra hoops because they're not going to give you money, and you go back and do something that doesn't meet code. That's inherently what they're.
So can I start?
Yes, sir.
So to meet code is going to come out of our coffers rather than coming from FEMA?
We're working with FEMA on a new program called a 428, and that is something that came after the Puerto Rico, I'm sorry, relieved, can't remember the hurricane, Hurricane Irma, maybe. They came up with this program where basically they take your whole project in totality and try to settle with you with the number. On Friday, I believe, we got the first peek at what a number would look like on this, and it's, of course, negotiable. I mean, they just send their inspectors over and they say, "This is what we think it is," and then we have Tim and Ann kind of working the other way down, and we try to get somewhere in the middle. So we've just started that process. And then I think, when you get into B, that would include some, tell me, talk to me about B, Tim, in your resolution. Repairing the facility to its pre-construction, but also retrofitting so to make it more resistant to this type of damage. That's putting in mitigation-type things. That's moving stuff around in the facility, so.
Moving stuff around to avoid any future flooding, working with that Sallyport area to try to prevent water from entering that space in the future, and redefining that space and how we use it in terms of stores, people, et cetera.
Correct. Then item C would be taking the whole facility, getting more to Commissioner Booker's point, and repurposing it, meaning maybe moving the DA over and doing something. That gets back to your facility plan, which we're going to talk about with the board at their work session, to get some more into some of those items you did there. So you really got three cost points in there.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I put my two cents worth in it, I agree with the commissioner to the point that I don't think that we need to go and invest more money into it and making it, trying to, you know, to meet all these needs when it was not originally designed for. I mean, I'm not in favor of tearing it down.
Let me just interrupt you. I'm not in favor of tearing down the historic part. I'm only talking about the add-on.
And I'm not trying to imply that you were.
No, okay.
I just, but sitting here, the number of years I have, you know, anything you talk about with a historic.
Already implied.
Historic building.
I get that.
You're going to get calls before you get hung.
Yeah, I get that. I was not talking.
Yeah, yeah.
I was not talking about tearing it down.
Yeah, put that in the record, you know. That's my concern. I don't want us to go and start spending funds into it to do something with it when, we as a board, I mean, we've had a little bit of discussion about, you know, the future, but I think we've got to have a whole lot more discussion.
Yeah.
And I'm definitely in favor of moving the EOC. It's got to get away from there. I mean, you know, I just don't want to spend no more money in that building than what we have to.
Right.
So I'll end with that.
Here's my, here's my take. This is the way I've talked to myself about it to get comfortable with it. Basically, item A buys us three to five years to figure out what we want to do. We've got to repair those things so we can maintain the building. Regardless, if we started a new building today, it's going to be three to five years before we occupy it. So we've got to do A to get there. B, I mean, the risk you make if you don't do some of the things in B is if you have another flood and it's damaged, FEMA may not pay you for it. Your insurance may not pay you for it. So you may have, you know, a much larger cost when you finally get to see. So there are some, you can see how complex it is.
So there are some, you can see how complex it is. It's really three different projects, and one, and that's why we chose this, Tim, as we started looking at it, is, you know, you may uncover something that you don't want to do, but if you bid it, then it's part of the deal.
But also, if I may, nobody else has anything to say, we need to keep in mind now, we've got a large number here. This large number is not all ours. Jack brought up a good point that we all got to realize. If we take any money from FEMA or even our insurance and we do not remediate the issues and the problems, then we've lost everything that we've put into this building. So just by chance, if we get $5.5 million from FEMA and we get another $0.5 million or $1 million from insurance for what we've got, that puts us at risk for 2.5 million instead of the $9 million to move it forward, and it gives us further on down the line. And it also gives the county in the future the possibility of what we move out, of bringing some of our departments in that are in bad areas, that we've already made concessions for in this building. But if I'm hearing right, and what I've heard here, by approving this resolution, only allow staff to move forward to get something going. It's going to cost us 1.5%, 2%, whatever that cost may be, which we don't know. So you can plan on probably, what, $200,000, $250,000 of that cost to get it started and moving forward. And we got the opportunity to back out at any time, but we got to remember, we still have to do something because they're not operational or functional.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
With it, I'm conscious that we may be working under a timeline that we're not aware of. If I recall correctly, under federal law 106, a building that is owned by a public entity like the county that is over 50 years old may be considered historic under federal law. Okay, so I don't know what the annex in the old jail, I don't know what they're...
1980s, so it's still...
1980s, okay, but there is not an indefinite amount of time to make these decisions. I am in favor of repurposing the building for what I will call non-critical, okay? The DA's office is critical, but it's not critical in an emergency. Same with the clerk of court. I will, I am not in favor of keeping the EOC in a highly vulnerable area because it's not just the building, it's the area itself. And if we get another Florence or if we get a worse Florence, the whole area downtown could become impassable just to get in and out of. But as I read the resolution, and I think there's, we've got so much data here, it's getting lost, what this sets us up to do is to evaluate which of these three options is the best going forward.
Correct.
With it, that's what it allows us to do, is when we get the plans, the estimates, the reports back, then we can say, do we want Option A, which is bring it back to pre-Florence? Do we want Option B, pre-Florence plus mitigation? Or C, do we start repurposing and moving? And that's a great, big discussion, as my two colleagues have both said. But we have to have all that information to figure out if we want A, B, and C, and this will allow us to do this.
And we have to, Commissioner Booker, I have one thing. We have to dance with FEMA on all three steps. And that's why it's requiring us to look at it three different ways. And I mean, I could give you so many examples, but the world's most perfect one is if you're facing the Sallyport area where it goes underground and the old magistrate's window there, where you go in, there's this emergency stairwell to the left. That dumps out into four, whatever how much water was there, so you can't get out that door in a fire if that's flooded. So when we retrofit as part of B, we've got to rebuild the emergency fire escape, and that's not a cheap thing to do. But in the same sense, then we're going to caveat that with a new elevator shaft. So we're going to have a whole new tower there. If you put everything back, yeah, you've got a nice stairwell and the elevator's still working, but you also have things that are not code. I mean, so you get, it's so, there's so many moving pieces in this puzzle.
Mr. Chairman, just one other quick point, and not to be on a soapbox, but just because we get money from the government, whose money is that? I'm not saying we shouldn't use it, but we got to be careful always not say, well, we're going to get reimbursed by FEMA or we're going to be, but it's a federal grant, and I just, I'm always sensitive to the fact that I'm the one writing those checks every year to put that money in there. And if it's going to go to somebody else rather than us, I'll take it. But I just need to make that point.
Well, I understand that, and I mean, we're philosophical differences on that. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, who's paying for it, but FEMA is going to pay us. Now, whether we take it or not is our call. If we don't take it, then the whole cost, because we've still got to get that building fixed at any cost.
I understand that. I'm not saying we shouldn't take it.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, and I don't like it. I've always said I don't like it. If nobody else gives it and don't get it, don't take it. But we have to fix it one way or the other. It's got to be fixed. We do it on our dime or we do it on our federal dollars dime that we all pay for. Everybody hopefully should know that, but it needs to be fixed out of our local taxpayer dollars or out of our federal taxpayer dollars that's coming in here. And I fully understand you. Don't get me wrong on that, I really do, but either, and I think Commissioner ET made good ballot points and everything else, this is just to get us at a stage where we can make a decision on which way we want to go on it, A, B, or C. That's what it comes down to, boils down to.
I want to turn to Tim and Gene. I know I've said a lot. Is there anything y'all want to add to this conversation? Tim, I didn't say that might be important. Steve, I see you back here, too.
You summed up really well, beginning with the example of the Sierra Valley, how that rules into a code update.
I think we got six.
Having, looking at A, B, and C, bringing back the information so that we can make a decision based on valid information.
Mr. Chairman, Jack, we've been talking about long-term possibility of moving this whole county to another seat, you know, to another property. In that event, whenever it would happen, that building could be sold to whoever would want it.
I don't want to say no, that that wouldn't happen, Vice Chairman. I would say that would be the most, that would be a difficult one. I think if you're going to have that building, the pressing need from the court system is going to overtrump because you're going to spend it either way. I'd much rather not look for new property to help the court expand and maybe try to utilize something there. I mean, one of the challenges we have in downtown New Bern is there's not a lot of vacant land. There are some possibilities there of partnerships that we've kind of been talking loosely about, but at this point, nothing concrete. I think Tim and Ann, one of y'all could speak to the fact, I mean, you met with Terry Sharp, our clerk of court, and you see the burden she's under just from a file storage standpoint plus growth in her office. You know, I think that, at some point, that's going to be a real pressing need, if it's not already. Don't forget, she had a huge file room below grade that we had to freeze all the files and replicate that have now gone up to what used to be the old confinement space. I think she's taken a whole, was it B block, entire B block? C block? Which is a pretty massive building really in itself.
Mr. Chairman, last thing I would just say. You probably can't do this, but I just, you know, I won't feel at ease knowing that we're not going to spend any extra funds, and the commissioner has said this, I'm not trying, I think he's echoed it, any extra funds in that building that we don't have to spend, when those dollars could be put towards a new facility. I know we've got to do our part to get the FEMA reimbursement and to get it back, but definitely I think, well, I won't speak for the whole board, but for myself, I think our facilities plans definitely look to another facility to move some of what we have there. And so good utilization of taxpayers' dollars is to take those funds and put it towards a new facility sooner rather than later. So, I mean, I have no trouble in voting for this. You know, if C, down there where it says thereafter repurposing the use of the facility to expand and relocate, et cetera, et cetera, if that is just doing what line one says, evaluate. I mean, if that is always doing is evaluating, I have no trouble passing this. But if it goes further than that in spending dollars to repurpose, reallocate, whatever, then I have a problem with it.
I think, no, sir, I think it's the first one you said. And I think for the board, that maybe this will help, obviously, we're going to have to bring every one of these options back to you. I mean, all we're asking today is really to start scoping them and evaluating, and I think, you know, we'll give you the pros and cons of each one as we go through A, B, and C, and the costs associated with it. I think A is pressing right now. A is a very pressing need. There's not a lot of time we have to, I mean, that has to happen. B is almost as pressing as A because you don't want to do something, make a mistake in A that you could have avoided a future problem. But I think with C, sir, we don't want to spend any more money. We have to, and I agree with your synopsis, that would be something, would just be evaluation at this point.
Any other questions? Gene, you don't have anything else? Anything to discuss, anything else? Okay, based on that, no further questions. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Chairman, can I say something? What are we voting on?
We're voting on authorizing myself to sign this resolution, authorizing staff to move forward to getting, what's the word?
We begin the process.
Yeah, process?
Yeah, doing the RFQ and...
For A, B, and C.
I don't understand this. I'm not, I can go over it and try to get more understanding of it.
All right, what don't you understand?
So let me just, let me try to see if I can walk you through the process, Commissioner. Here's what I, Tim will have to help me on this. So the traditional bid is you would authorize us to go out and bid. We'd put a bid package on the street, we would go out and receive bids, and we'd bring to you the lowest responsive bid for you to approve. In this methodology today, you're agreeing for the chairman to sign the contract. We're going to do an RFQ to procure a construction manager, where we're going to go out and give you maximum price under three project categories, A, B, and C. You can see what A would cost, what B would cost, and C was cost, and at that point, then the board would have a discussion about which way you wanted to go. So the only difference is, instead of going out on the street for an RFP to actually get real pricing for, you know, a project, we're going to hire a construction manager and then bring you back the scope of each one with a price each time.
Which has just given us the cost estimate for each one of those phases. Either we accept...
So we got to pay a cost.
And to Tim's point, if you don't like what we bring back on A, B, and C, then you go back to Item 1 and you bid it out. Put out what they've developed through the scope as specs, specification, and then you bid it, and you come back and see how close you were.
So right now, nothing's written in concrete.
You have not agreed to spend any amount of money other than what you've already agreed to pay the architect, engineer, and it was, what was the fee for this if we choose not to use it once we hire a construction? Was it 1% to 2%?
Yes.
You're agreeing to 1% to 2% based on what the project scope's out at. He gave you that range in here.
Okay.
Okay, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion.
Have a second.
Have a second. Any further discussions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. Oh, Gene, you get to stay up here with us.
Yeah, you got rid of me.
Solid Waste Croatan Convenience Center Construction Contract Award. Gene Hodges.
All right, another project we've been talking about for quite a while here. So on August 22nd, staff posted an RFP on the county website as well as notified local contractors that the county is soliciting proposals for the construction of a new solid waste convenience center. The new center will be located at 7240 East US Highway 70, New Bern. The new center will be named Croatan Convenience Center, and it is, the new convenience center will replace the existing Hickman Hill Convenience Center, which will be closed due to the construction of the Hive Lot, of the Hive Lot bypass. Included in your agenda was a project site plan for reference. On September 3rd, a pre-bid meeting was held on site. Two bidders were present. The proposals were due back on September 9th for a formal bid opening. Three proposals were received. The contractors submitting proposals were Cesco Construction Company, Eek, GHC Construction, Inc., and Sunland Builders. Included in your packet was an official rating sheet. The proposals were rated based on cost, and if the contract admitted the minimum bid requirements. After analyzing and rating the submitted proposals, county staff recommends the board commissioners award the Croatan Convenience Center Construction Contract to GHC Construction in the amount of $542,225. So what we're asking for is awarding the project to GHC Construction and authorizing staff to execute a contract for the construction of this convenience site.
Entertainer motion?
So move.
Motion, second. Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Gene, thank you, sir.
Gene, go sit down, huh?
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, appointments. Okay, pending, adult care, nursing home, New Bern planning and zoning, Trillium. Okay, current appointments, term expiring September 16th. Juvenile crime prevention, the term of Tracy Monk is due to expire on the June 15th. Ms. Monk wishes to be reappointed. Anyone would like to...
I'll reappoint her.
Okay, nomination to reappoint Tracy Monk. Any objections? Any other nominations? By acclamation, she's reappointed. Craven Community Child Protection Team, the term of Shawna Knight is due to expire 30 September on the Craven Community Child Protection Team. Ms. Knight wishes to be reappointed.
So moved.
Nomination from Ms. Knight. Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, she's reappointed. Trillium Health Services Board, Angela Sheets has submitted the application as shown in the file here. Seek an appointment to the Trillium Health Services Board. I'll make a motion to appoint her. Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, she's appointed to the Trillium Board. Upcoming appointments, Voluntary Agricultural Board, Ricky Harrison, District 1, and that's it. Okay, moving on. Petitions to citizens, comments directly pertaining to policies and issues which are under the statutory administration authority of this board.
Vice Chair.
Ray Griffin. Amen to this. God bless, Ray Griffin, Vasspoor, North Carolina, and the talking about, under the board, the gentleman was talking about alcohol, and you have the problem to remedy a problem. And I first heard the lawyer who's talking about the prayer, and he said darkness is coming over the land and we are being filled with darkness every day. Alcohol, our number one drug and number one drug cause to our families and to the community, our biggest drug-related inconvenience truth because it's too often close to home and two-way profit to the government. You guys think you're making money out of this, and right now here today, you're already promoting to already build more drugs, facilities, and state-of-the-art. And alcohol, it scores on the most, on the agenda, on the most harmful drug to society. And I see where you are aggressively looking for new plans to build new places to sell alcohol, and you should think about it. Even the gentleman admitted about opioid addiction and the money they were doing for rehabilitation and all these things. When you really break it down, you're not making any money whatsoever. It's really sad world that you look at this as just another situation, but you are causing problems in the county. Think about all the children, teenagers, the number one drug for teenagers is alcohol. Think about all the children, teenagers, the number one drug for teenagers is alcohol. And I want to bring one thing, thank God for the storm that just passed. Thank God that we didn't have any major problems. Thank God for the election that we just had. Thank God we got two Republicans in there, and you're talking about the county, and I'm gonna say it, the Democrats, which I said are promoting, were the ones that run against, with abortion, homosexuality, same-sex marriage, therefore, everything that the Bible is against. And we sit here and we should learn that we, as Craven County, after one of the gentleman has said about unity, we need unity within this county. I have just done several lately here opioid funerals. I have seen a drug of, but number one drug is still alcohol, and you guys are still promoting it, and you're still putting people on the street to be drug alcohol. You should be helping the Sheriff Department, you should be helping those people that are having problems with drug-affiliated situations. It doesn't matter what's alcohol or drug, but I say we are living and sad we are a society of misfits. We have turned Craven County into a drug-related situation. Craven County can be a better county. It can be better, close, some of these drugs will do away with something, some of these things will happen, and you have the ability to that. And one thing about it, the Bible says that when you make these laws, and the legislation officials make laws that are against what the Bible says, they will stand in the judgment of God. So, all I can tell is legislators, the government, they even passed a law the other day, maybe not being Craven, well, it will be Craven County, about only driver's license now. It will say male, female, or other. Now, that's really crazy, but it says other. So, questionable, but God bless you for the laws you made.
Thank you, sir.
Deidre Derocher.
My name is Deidre Derocher. I'm a resident in the Riverside section. I am a staff member of Habitat for Humanity. I put my name on because I didn't know if there would be any questions relative to the next item on the agenda. I don't have any comments at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving on. Before we do that, let me, before I call up county attorneys, I wanna, I normally don't do this, but I think it's appropriate that I do, to respond back to one of our citizens. Pastor, we have not been asked for a new facility. You heard that from a committee or a board that's set by the state that we appoint. We have not been asked to approve a facility. It has not come before this board. We're not, we're not privy to that until it comes before us. So, I understand where you're hearing what you're saying, but this board as a whole has not put out anybody to look for a place, nor have we have approved a place for a new facility. And to answer your other question, this board approved almost $300,000 for our opioid teams for this county, this last budget, and we're partners with Onslow and Carteret County for the rehab center down in Jacksonville at a tune of $260,000 a year. So, that's about $600,000 a year that this county and its folks are paying taxes on, are supporting for opioid. Now, I'm not faulting you or anything else, but I want to make sure you understand that this county has taken a great initiative, and that's due to his chairmanship when he started this program to go through. So, we are working. It is an issue, it is an issue in this society and not in this county. And I'm not trying to belittle you, please don't take it that way, but I think you need to know that this board is standing up for its citizens and trying the best we can to get it out. But we have not, we have not approved or even heard approached for that issue. At that time, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. I have two items for the board's consideration this morning. As stated in the agenda packet, the first item is the transfer of real estate to the city of New Bern, who in turn plans on transferring these properties to Habitat for Humanity for their program to build homes for their eligible participants. The county has engaged in this type of transaction with the city on several times previously. These lots are jointly owned between the county and the city. We acquired the properties through tax foreclosures. They've obviously been sitting there without any interest from buyers. If the board approves this proposal, we will basically transfer our interest to the city, and then the city in turn will have the agreement with Habitat on, you know, building homes and the time limits and things like that. Our protection in this situation is if, basically, a home is not completed on any individual lot within 24 months, the property will revert back to the city, and then the city is under the affirmative obligation to deed us back our percentage ownership. I don't believe that's happened in any of these other arrangements historically, and of course, the ultimate goal was to get homes built and get folks living in these homes, and that's obviously important, but also to get the properties back on the tax rolls. So, our recommendation is that the city adopt the resolution in your agenda packet, which will in turn authorize the chairman, the vice chairman, and your management team to sign contracts and deeds and any other documents that are necessary to get the deal done.
Entertaining motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I want to make sure everybody understands what Mr. Grady had said. This is for all of the properties at one time for 24 months. If they're not done by 24 months, they revert back to the city, and our share reverts back to us.
Yes, sir.
Understanding that the city cannot share, sell these, other than donate to Habitat for Humanity.
Yes, sir. It's structured as a donation from the city to Habitat, so it's not for any purchase price or other monetary consideration.
Motion and second. Any further discussion, any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Thank you, Ara. My second item is a, to finalize an offer to purchase real estate that the county acquired through a tax foreclosure. The property is 5400 County Line Road, parcel number 7-053-005-A. The board tentatively approved the initial bid we received some weeks ago. The total taxes and costs foreclosed on were $7,842.05. The bid amount is $7,000, and if the board is inclined to give final approval, we will execute deeds and other documents and hopefully have this back on the tax rolls within the next couple of days.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. County Manager.
You, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Was reliving some conversation through Gene's agenda item about where exactly we were one year ago today, and it was the first time the Commissioners came together after Hurricane Florence. Wasn't in this room, was still at the courthouse. We weren't quite ready to be back here, but certainly symbolic, today, we're talking about moving forward, which has been our theme for the last year, and I'm so proud of, you know, all the folks in the county and our cities and our volunteers who've helped us to get to this point, and there's a long way to go, just like we talked about this morning. There's a lot of things that have to be put back together, and as you're reminded, as you drive through your districts, you'll still see homes that are unoccupied, and that continues to be a problem as we move forward. So, it's certainly a somber reminder, but the positivity and progress is there for me. I wanted to brief you real quick on Hurricane Dorian. What we had planned for as the worst, we always planned for the worst and hoped for the best. I think our hope won this time, and we certainly got a better-case scenario in our county. We did operate the emergency operations center, Mr. Kites here, he did a great job, again, leading us through this. Stanley brings a lot of experience and expertise to the table, and he's got a great staff in Patty and Ira, who work tirelessly to make all the plans and preparations that we have to do. We had done all that, we did open shelters, we did do a voluntary evacuation, we did assist our partners, we did have our EOC fully operational with folks in it. It was a good test run for us. It's always nice to get in there and practice what we planned for, but Stanley, I think it turned out real well, with a few limbs and some power outages for a while, but other than that, there wasn't any long-term effects that we found so far. Any questions about Hurricane Dorian before I move forward?
I didn't catch it this morning. Were we one of the counties that was declared by the governor? He declared 13 counties.
I did not watch the news this morning, I'm sorry, sir. We'll check. With that said, I do have an item I want to bring forward to the board. Back in late August, we were awarded a $20,000 grant from Duke Energy, and I'm just gonna read you the first paragraph here and then talk to you a little bit about what we're doing with it. Craven County received a $20,000 grant from the Duke Energy Foundation to create powerful communities in Craven County through emergency response. Craven County is one of 65 organizations in North Carolina to collectively receive 1.1 million in grants from the Duke Energy Foundation to increase their response capabilities for future weather events with advanced preparation and planning. Craven County applied for $35,000 for a Argo eight-wheel amphibious vehicle to replace the current aged product that we have now for high-water emergencies, and we were awarded $20,000 from Duke Energy, and we're really pleased with that, and Stanley worked real hard on getting that grant application in. Good news is, we got $20,000. Bad news is, it still costs $35,000. So, what Stanley, if he'll come forward, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what this piece of equipment is, and ask for the boards' indulgence at your next meeting, potentially considering covering the remaining cost to allow us to purchase this equipment. Stanley, if you'll come forward and talk a little bit. The actual Argo eight-wheel vehicle is $27,000, it's the purchase price, but there's some subsequent things which Stanley's gonna talk to you about that go along with it. So, Stanley?
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Currently, the ATV that we use for both amphibious, which means it can traverse through water as well as on the road portion, is a MAX that was purchased during Hurricane Floyd. It's a special ops-type vehicle, and you don't see it very often because we don't just leave it out for people to use on a regular basis, but we take it and we deploy it in certain situations, scenarios. During Florence, the MAX was kept pretty much close at the county garage because of its mechanical condition. It was in service, but it was in service at question at best as to whether or not how reliable and dependable it would be should we have to use it. So, we still have it, we still have it in service, but it basically outlived its life expectancy and just dire need of replacement. The Duke Energy Foundation has offered us an opportunity to go into an Argo amphibious vehicle, which we were looking at and quoting the specifications on the Aurora model, which would again enhance the number of personnel we could actually deploy into a neighborhood, and we were trying likewise to have the proper flotation equipment, helmets, and et cetera to support that staff. So, we want to keep the vehicle as a unit, ready to go on short notice and quick response for personnel, to be able to go to some areas where a boat can only go so far, and then you have topography changes, and you're back on land, and you're back in the water, and that's where these amphibious multipurpose vehicles serve very well. As well as it can be used in non-flood events, in swampy areas and things that you just normally can't use a standard ATV. So, we would like very much to be able to move forward with that, and I told Mr. Jack that we could obviously make some compromises, but I don't want to compromise for the state for the crew, the type of vehicle, the specifications of vehicle that we're looking for. Any support you would consider on that would be helpful.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. We used it, well, during Hurricane Matthew, right much, over in the River Road area, and it was of great assistance and great help. I saw that first time, and so definitely, if it's not operational, we need one.
All right.
I could deploy it today, but I would deploy it hesitationally, that it would have to be a priority mission.
It'll use it, too.
If I may, if the board understands it, and knows what it is, and has seen it before, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the $15,000 a day instead of bringing it back in October and dragging this on.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
Motion and second. Any discussions?
We do need it.
Roll call?
Would that be for fund balance, sir?
Allo, fund balance.
Okay.
Fund balance. Unless Jack's got it in his wallet.
No, sir.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, for that. Appreciate that, and I'm, actually, Commissioner Booker, I'm gonna pass the press release down to see if you can, that's a draft, so just there, and they will be doing a presentation to the county of the check, but I do want to thank Duke Energy for their investment in our community, and this isn't the only time they've invested. They invested $20,000 immediately after Florence for need of supplies for our community, and they continue to invest in our economic development efforts, so I'll give them that credit. Wanted to make the board aware, in your memo this week, there was an invitation to a World War I monument memorial rededication today at 4:00 PM at the Courthouse lawn. It's gonna be a great ceremony. Mr. Hodges, our assistant manager, worked closely with them to make some changes to the monument, to add names that have been found just recently, so really excited about that, and I believe a couple of Commissioners are actually speaking at that event, so look forward to that. And, Mr. Chair, I'm available, I don't know when you want to talk about, about the, I noticed there was a, there's a tentative work session calendar, if you want me to, you want to talk about it now, or you'd rather talk about it at the end, it's up to you?
Now, let's do it now, since you're up here. I think if you go back to your last page of the agenda, it said, the, we recessed, and we're gonna convene 23 September, I think people may have taken this the wrong way. I put out an email Friday to everyone of reason why we canceled the workshop with Dorian in a short period of time, the staff and myself didn't have enough time to get all the information, everything we needed. So, I asked the manager to put this on here. Again, up to the board, I don't set meeting dates and call special meetings, but I would propose, since we can't have it today, that we reconvene a special call meeting workshop on the 23rd of September, depending on your schedule. But keep in mind, I think we need to move forward on this, the number of items that we have, because we're starting to get into the holiday season, and a lot of people are gonna be gone and out of here, and you know what happens after the first of the year, we go, turn right around, go into budget time, and there's a few things on here that the manager and myself need to act on before the first of the year.
Right.
But we need your own authority.
Mr. Chair, may I add a couple of things?
Yes, sir.
I think there was a list we developed during our budget process, and things we said, hey, let's get by the budget, let's get this behind us, and we'll come back in the fall. Some of them, I think we're ready for, and some of them, I still think need more time. And, Mr. Chair, if I could just kind of go through some of those with the board. On the 23rd, we've got some facility things, as Gene already brought one project for. We need to kind of put a pin in the facility study. We presented in May, we told you we'd come back this fall. I think we need to hear your final thoughts on it, and we need to memorialize it and say that's the document, or it's not the document. With that said, we've been working from that document to start outlining, you remember there was a three-to-five-to-10-year plan in there, because some of the things, we've seen pressure points in there, we've had to go ahead and start making plans. One of the first projects inside that plan was contemplating a new Parks and Rec building at Creekside Park and removing those folks from the building here. Well, after the budget, we got a couple new positions in here, and it's really put a lot of pressure on us for where we put these folks. We've made some temporary improvements, but I can tell you, it's a Band-Aid and not a permanent fix. What that building would allow us to do is then have a three-to-five-year plan in this building, along with a permanent location for Parks and Rec. I'm not trying to get too far down the road on that, there's certainly a justification that Billy Wilks and Gene could give you that's better than what I said, but there's other projects as we develop, like a new county building. One of the things we talked about today, we've begun the process of scoping out that project to determine costs. project to determine costs and see if it's something that we think's viable from an expense standpoint with the board. We'd like to have those conversations with you on the 23rd if possible, so we can get some direction on how to move forward. There was discussion about school resource officers. We're still, Mr. Chair, you correct me if I'm wrong, we're still waiting to see what the state's doing on that. Obviously, there were no new officers in our budget, and there's been no grant process for it to apply. We still need to maintain what we're doing, but we need some direction on what the board's looking for. I think that item's ready for the 23rd. There was some discussion about carts. We've been having public information input sessions, you know, we would have loved to have all of them done before now, but Hurricane Dorian came and we ended up canceling a week. Some of them had low turnout, we're trying to reschedule. We're trying to get an advisor from the state to be the meeting, which he will not be able to be here on the 23rd. I don't think we're ready for that yet. I know it's an important discussion with the board, but that's one, I'm not sure we're going to have all the information for you at that meeting. Gene, help me, there was one more big item on that agenda we wanted to talk about.
There was a, there was a recreation issue about-
Yes.
County one?
We wanted to have a, an overarching recreation issue. Our department head, Billy Wilks, has had to be out on the personal situation. I know Gene's been working with the assistant director. I think we could be ready on the 23rd, I'm just not sure if Billy will be back for that conversation, but, I mean, we could have it without him, but again, it's a decision point the board would need to make. And then I'm sure there's a variety of smaller issues from the budget that I have notes on, I didn't bring today unfortunately, but we could, we could talk about, but those are sort of the meat and potatoes of what we were coming in for. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So what's the schedule look like for everybody? Is everybody, can, can, we meet that?
I got to call in, but I can call in for the whole session.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. All right. Based on that, we'll call for the 20, special calls.
Okay.
Meeting on the 23rd at 8:30.
Do you want to try to do carts and recreation that day, or would you like to wait?
I think we need to hear on recreation, but put carts aside until we got everything that we want to talk about that's in there.
We're going to need at least the month of September to finish up the public input sessions, then we got to have time with the data. We could shoot for like a late October or maybe even early November time. I don't want you, I don't want to push it too far, but-
I don't think we need to go past mid-October.
Okay.
And I say that because after that, I don't think a lot of us are going to be here for making that. I think it's going to be a big decision one way or the other, whichever way we go with it, but I think the whole board needs to be involved-
Very good.
-with that decision.
Okay. September 23rd, 8:30 a.m. in this room. We'll go ahead and notice that.
And plan on lunch.
Yes, sir. We sure will. And I'll send an agenda out to the board this week, so you know what we're, what we're going for. Mr. Chair, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Jack, please, I don't want that in front of me.
It's not made out to me.
All right. Next one is in the commissioners' report. Commissioner McCabe?
Commissioner, I just have one thing. Only, is everybody on the board going to go to the rededication? Does that have to know at four o'clock? J.C. Yvonne?
Yes.
I am not sure I have a-
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Uh, Commissioner Booker?
Yeah, just a quick comment, has nothing to do with the, the county. As most of you probably noticed, I got my face back and I'm not patched up anymore. And I only mention that because a very small black spot, dark spot, occurred on my nose, and I had already been to the dermatologist two months earlier, it wasn't there. I went back to the dermatologist, and it turned out to be melanoma, and melanoma is a serious problem. I only say it because I lost a really close friend from melanoma two or three years ago because he ignored something that occurred, and by the time he finally went, it was too late, so, and he was in his 50s. So I only say, if you don't, if you don't have a dermatologist and you don't pay attention, you need to.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make the board aware and our citizens across the county that September the 28th, it's a Saturday, Cove City will have our annual Fireman's Day, starting at 10 o'clock with the parade. I invite my colleagues to come and participate if you're available, and then we've got some good old barbecue and chicken afterward at 11 o'clock, so good old time in Cove City. Also, Mr. Chairman, I just, also, our county manager has already expressed his appreciation for those that assisted during Hurricane Dorian, but I think it's due that we, thank you for your leadership, you kept us all abreast during the things going on, and you spent a lot of time in preparation for it, and appreciate your leadership during that time. So that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Mr.?
Just a quick comment on Dorian. Again, number one, thank you to leadership and staff who put in all the extra hours, and the feedback, I was checking in and out with Ben Quinn, which was our animal-friendly shelter. The feedback that I got from citizens and other government people within the area was that this one was much smoother, better coordinated, and that despite all the extra work, they appreciated the drill on emergency procedures, and we are continuing to do it better and improve our services to our citizens. So thank you and congratulations, did a good job. That's it.
Vice Chair?
I have no reports here.
Okay. Only two things I have, just to remind everybody, this past week I had two resolutions, two events I attended, and that was the prostate cancer group, the support group, read the proclamation, September is prostate cancer month, affects all men, African-American men more than anyone, so please get your checks, there's a free clinic this weekend, you can go online and find that out. And then Saturday, I went to the Resilient Recovery down here in the park, a great turnout, as the pastor was saying, on, on a recovery, probably 150 people or more in 25 to 30 different organizations, which, which was a good turnout and a good group, which is a yearly event. Resilient Recovery is a nationwide program in September, and read that. We're going to go into closed session, the board will be requested to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3, attorney-client privilege. We will be coming out for actions afterwards on that, so be, be prepared for that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, go ahead and finish. I just want to come back.
Oh, no, not with my vice chair, I saw something.
I got a little note from Pat Sager. October 5th, the SWF great committee will be having a cleanup, and she would appreciate as many people to show up in the parking lot at the government building here at Craving County.
Thank you, sir. Please, anybody interested can do that, show up for that. Based on that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make sure motion go into closed session.
Second.
No, second. Motion and second, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take five before we go.